Good afternoon. Appreciate everybody coming on to CO4 with us for today, our meeting. Call it to order and roll call please.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Potts? Commissioner Oliver Tusk? Commissioner Mitch Harland?
Here.
Commissioner Eric Turnbull? Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Andrew?
President.
We're gonna go out of order just for a minute or two. We want to recognize the student of the month. We have the option and the commitment, so we'll take care of that at this time.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Henry. Okay, so I would like to go ahead and recognize our student of the month, Kevin. So, Ms. Siobhan, if you could go up and say a couple words about him. And so, it's rare that we get the students to actually be here on board meeting day, but I begged him today, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. It's awesome to have Kevin here today. If you guys check out his smile, you'll know that he's dedicated and he was gonna be here today, so good to have him. So, our student of the month is Kevin Villa Alvarez. Kevin consistently demonstrates leadership qualities, a great potential for future employment opportunities in the field of construction, as well as works wells with his peers. So, we go to do our Midwest food bank pickup. He's always the first one out there grabbing boxes and bringing them in, talking to the other students, got us laughing, and he's just a really great kid and we're happy to have him in the program, so congratulations, Kevin.
So, Kevin, I already heard.
Thank you. Well, I'm new at this. I don't really talk to people, but I appreciate you guys for choosing me. There's a lot of smart students in this cohort, but you know, they chose me for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we know you gotta get to work, so you can go whenever you need to, Kevin. Alright, thank you, Dr. Henry, for letting us interrupt there.
Alright, now we'll have approval of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion for the approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Roll call please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Harland?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. Time for public comments on agenda items only. If you have any comments on the agenda items only. Carry on. We'll move for approval of the minutes. I have a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's probably moved to second. Roll call please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Harland?
Hi, say.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along. New business. Federal Resolution 2022-03. Approval of the comprehensive software system RFP.
Yeah, sure. So, we have selected Yardi for our new software company. Had the staff review and we looked over everything and it just appears that Yardi is our best option. So, it'll be several months before we implement, but this is what the selection that we made, so.
My recollection is Yardi, there's extensive training program. I'm just maybe now, I'm not really asking questions because I've used it for property management. Now, I'm sure that that's been part of the negotiation, right, from them coming in and training you because there's a lot of layers.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah. So, we plan to get some training started and begin conversion probably next year. But, we're gonna move forward with selecting them as the software company.
Did you select this one because user-friendly or possibly better option?
Based on the proposals that we've received, this was the best option. This was one of the, Yardi is obviously a leader in the software world for housing. And just given the needs of our agency, our tax credit programs, the various programs that we have, we believe that this is the best option for us.
Any other comments or questions? If there's no other comments, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the Resolution 2022-03.
A motion that we approve Resolution 2022-03 for comprehensive software system RFP.
Second.
It's been probably moved to second. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Harland?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Andrew?
Okay, next item, we have adoption and approval of the strategic plan.
So, this is pretty straightforward. I believe our strategic plan is what we've all worked on, what Government Associates developed for us. And just by the board adopting it, we're able to move forward and enact certain things in the strategic plan and really just kind of align our our goals and our programs for the next several years to the strategic plan. So, this is just asking the board to approve it. And adopt it.
Any questions or comments anybody would like to make?
I will make a motion to approve the strategic plan as written.
I will adopt that.
That's good news. So, we would have, like to have a roll call please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Harland?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Andrew?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item number six. I'd like to have our executive officers report, please.
Right. Alright, so first I have just a recognition and announcements. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Darryl Silver. Darryl is our inspector. On his retirement, tomorrow is his last day with HACC. He's been with us for eight years and he's ready to go retire. So, we had a little cupcakes and social with him this morning, but we also wanted to recognize Darryl with this little factor, whatever. So, thank you, Darryl. Appreciate you. It was a pleasure working with you. Thank you for making all of our lives easier. Thank you so much. It was like taking a board.
Which has been interesting eight years. So, hopefully I've made an impact. I've used, I've had a construction background, so I think that made the job easier. And hopefully I showed respect and empathy to our clientele. And that was my goal. I worked in other, worked in weatherization with the county and for empty tune, doing low-income housing renovation. So, I think I fit in well and hopefully kept people safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you very much for your services. Well deserved.
And then next up, wanted to send our condolences to the family of Mr. Walter Hines. He did pass away a couple weeks ago. His service was held this past Saturday. So, Walter was one of our maintenance supervisors and he was with the authority for 23 years. And so, we're really sad to hear about his passing, but we did send some flowers and a letter to the family to his service. And a lot of the staff attended the services. I just wanted to make the board aware of that. And then, we already did Kevin, so we can skip ahead. We didn't have a board meeting in July, so we're doing our July and our August, July and our August employees of the month. So, first we have Ross Dimla, who's our senior accountant. So, Ross was nominated for our July employee of the month. I'll ask his supervisor, Miguel, to come up and say a couple words about him.
Okay. So, yes, I wanna congratulate Ross Dimla, Ross for short. I should say that when I interviewed Ross, he had a very positive attitude and very much, very much trust in himself. Literally, he told me, "I will master the position and improve it." I really was impressed by that. I don't know if I ever told you that, but I can tell now that, yes, it was not just like towards. In a very short time, Ross has become a very valuable asset to the Housing Authority. I'm very pleased with that mainly because I work directly with him. So, thank you, Ross, and congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Ross. Would you like to come up?
We also have this trophy for you. Thank you. We also send you congratulations.
Do I have to say something?
Yes, you have to, but you're welcome.
Ross, it's a pleasure to have in the office. He's very friendly and very bubbly and so we enjoy having him. Next, we have our August employee of the month, who is our new addition to our team, I think the newest person on our team. And her name is, her name is, her name is Ayesha. She isn't here because she's covering the front desk, which is why she was nominated for employee of the month. She's excellent at her job. But, hopefully we'll get someone to cover for her before the meeting is over. So, a few updates. I'm trying to make sure I stay on track here. We were nominated for a couple NARROW awards. And so, we got nominated for Awards of Excellence, which this will be the Housing Authority's, this Housing Authority Champagne County's first Awards of Excellence. But, we were nominated for the Youth Build Transitional Housing Program, the SHIFT Program, and our Healthy Beginnings Program for Awards of Excellence. So, congratulations to our LSS team and our Youth Build team for winning those awards on behalf of the Housing Authority. And then, we were also nominated for the Housing Authority of Champagne County's Youth Build Program as a whole, the Bridging the Gap Project Leadership Development Series, and Small Business Development Initiative. And so, the award ceremony will be held in San Diego at the NARROW conference. And so, hopefully we'll add some more awards to our wall. We're looking forward to that. Next, I'm super excited to announce to the board that we did win a grant for $475,000 for the Housing for Justice Involved Individuals through IDA. And so, this grant is for the acquisition, rehab, or new construction of projects related to individuals who are justice-involved. So, on the next slide, I have some of our plans or ideas for, well, I do have some updates on what we're gonna do, but I have another slide next. We also were renewed for, if you go to the next slide, sorry. We also were renewed for our rental housing support program through IDA as well, and that was $426,000. Of that, about $42,000 goes to our operating income. It'll serve about 12 to 15 people. So, this is our program where individuals are being released from prison on parole and they're issued vouchers and they come home to the units. And so, we work with local landlords who are willing to lease to this population. And our goal is to kind of really build up that pool, so when we do receive referrals from the Department of Corrections, we'll be able to get them housed quickly. And then, now I have details about the HJIIP grant. So, those are two grants from IDA. So, one was a renewal on a grant that we already had, and then this, the HJIIP grant is brand-new. And so, what we're looking at for the HJIIP grant is about 12 units of housing. We're looking at two different programs. One to be a site-based, like family reunification program, where single individuals who have been justice-involved in some manner can reunite with their children for a project and will attach project-based vouchers to those units and be able to transition people out and reunite with their children, have stable housing. And then, the other four homes that we're looking to renovate, we're looking at residential reentry centers, so kind of expanding or hoping to expand our partnerships that we have with Wynn and First Followers. We have signed MOUs already with them for supportive services, so we're looking forward to really like, you know, doing more for the reentry community and really looking to support them however we can. Next slide, please. Housing Authority was also awarded $300,000 for supportive services from the county board. And that is for, through their Violence Reduction Plan. And so, this $300,000 can go for application fee assistance, security deposit, housing search assistance, utility assistance, transportation assistance, critical documents, moving costs, furniture search, phone minute cards. And so, we know that one of the most difficult things about getting people stably housed is the supportive services aspect. And so, through our EHB program, we were really able to show some statistics to the county board that shows the impact of having supportive services and how quickly we can get people housed. And so, they were really excited about the opportunity to partner with the Housing Authority on this, and they did give us $300,000. And so, we're looking to start those programs September 1st. Also, the county board gave us another $85,000. And this one is for landlord incentives, another strategy for us to help get people housed. And so, our goal is, so we wrote up a plan, pretty much a census-track-based plan, to incentivize landlords for leasing properties in higher-income areas. And so, what our goal is, is to give up to $1,500 in a bonus to landlords to be able to take our tenants. So, as you know, there's a lot of fear around the voucher program, but we're hoping that this can push some of our clients out of these high-poverty areas into the higher-income areas, higher-opportunity areas, and then through incentivizing landlords as well. And then, these incentives can be coupled with the ones that the Housing Authority already has approved through HUD, such as the $500 new landlord bonus, as well as the re-lease incentive. So, we're hoping that this can really help us build better relationships with landlords and, you know, start to get a pool of good-quality housing for our clients. Next slide, please. Youth Build received a $30,000 grant from United Way. This grant is for supportive services for Youth Build. So, pretty much the same thing, some of the mental health needs, housing, different things like that. And I use this picture. I see the staff laughing. I was trying to find something good for supportive services and that was a really good picture for showing support. So, Mr. Vince was letting the kids right on his back and they were all like on each other's back and so. But, it can be used just for anything, like we can get students tutors, meals, wraparound services, anything like that that they may need to be successful in school. So, we thank United Way for their support of our program. Next, I have just kind of something I wanted to discuss with the board. We've had a lot of issues at Oakwood Trace over the last couple months. I know I have been in contact with some city staff, as well as county board members, city council members. And we're all concerned about what's going on at Oakwood Trace, as well as throughout the rest of the community. So, the Housing Authority has really been working on a violence response plan and just making sure that we can do our part at Oakwood Trace. So, we have, we're planning to, if we can, you know, get all the finances squared away, get everything in order, we're planning to upgrade the lighting at the sites, as well as add a camera system. And we're working on getting the fence repaired from one of the shootings several weeks ago where the car ran through the fence. And so, we've got the insurance check from that and I think we're waiting. They had to custom build the fence. And so, we're just waiting on that to be done, so we can get that fully repaired. I know a lot of people have had questions about why it's not done. Well, because it was a custom-built fence. So, we need to wait on them to finish that. And so, we're, it is, we're on the way to getting it done. And so, overall, hopefully in the months of September and October, we'll be bringing back to the board some final numbers. But, we're looking at about $300,000 or so and work that Oakwood Trace needs to make it safe. And I have met with the chief of police, as well as the investigators and the deputies out there and on what the Housing Authority can do to make the property safer. And I know they're doing some temporary things right now as far as like putting temporary cameras or something like that out there. And so, we're working with them and we're being as cooperative and collaborative as we can be. But, I just wanted to make the board aware because I know there's been a lot of questions and comments about Oakwood Trace and we were on the news as well. So, we want to make sure that the community does know that we're working on it and we're doing our best to get things improved there. Just, next slide, please. Other way, Jews. One more. Okay, so this is just a fundraising update. I told the board back in April that our goal was $2.5 million. Right now, we're at $3.7, so we're doing really well with fundraising this year. I'm blown away. So, I just, you know, I've heard a lot of good things about the work that we're doing and our staff is working really hard. And so, just to see that number, you know, put up, just in grants and different supports that our programs have gotten, it just really demonstrates how hard our team is working to, you know, make life better for our clients and how people are really invested in the work that we're doing. So, we're gonna continue to be good stewards of this funding and do our best with the programs. And so, just wanted to make the board aware because we're really proud. And we've got two pending grant applications that we're waiting to hear back from. So, hopefully that'll bring us to $4 million this year, which would be really cool. It'll be the first time since I've been here that we've raised that much, so that's exciting. Next slide, please. Wanted to let the board know about the upcoming FADA conference in September at Washington DC. If you're interested in that, reach out to Dina. Next slide. Also, there is a conference in San Diego. This is NARROW's first conference in three years. And so, NARROW is another industry group, so if you're interested in that, I don't know if the hotel, I think the hotel block is full. So, we might not be able to get you in that one, but just wanted to make the board aware of it.
In regards to NARROW, I just wanted to let you know that I attended the state conference in NARROW in Peoria. And we're attending, and this is also their first state conference that they had since the pandemic. Because we were all set to go in April 2019, I believe, in Chicago. In the pandemic case, so they had to cancel. And they had tickets for everybody to go to Chicago Cubs game, so I was disappointed about that. But, anyway, just as a little side note, I attended one of the sessions. Mr. Rick Hansen, our famous attorney here for our Housing Associates.
Is it famous or infamous?
I said famous. I didn't, I didn't make a mistake. But, anyway, I attended the session and, you know, you can never, you can never, you always want to keep learning about what you're doing and how you're doing. And the session, he, he's in it, I was a commissioner, didn't I think? And it's really, it got a lot out of me because we're really doing a lot of the right things here. And it's a good refresher for me and when Mr. Hansen gives you an opportunity to attend conferences, wherever, when you go, go because you really learned a lot. In this case, I found out that we were really doing a lot of the right things right on cue. He talked about the role of the commissioner, you know, hiring the EV. We've been through that process over the last, you know, half, two years and prior to that. So, that was right on. Only thing I would say that didn't go well is that people that asked questions, he gave lottery tickets to. Well, he gave me two lottery tickets because I was a participant, but I didn't win anything. But, anyway, I just wanted to say, did a nice job. I think I told you that, he was zipping away in his nice little.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm disappointed you didn't win either because as I make the announcement, want to give out the scratch off. I basically, for audience participation, I'm like, if you ask a question, if you participate, you get a scratch-off lottery ticket. But, the key is if you do win, the lawyer gets a third, so disappointed. But, thank you.
So, two people lost that day. Alright, next we have an update on Sugar Creek Crossing. It's scheduled to be completed in September. The electrical house boxes, our emitter panels have been delivered and are 80% installed. Light fixtures, electrical switches and outlets are 70% installed. The water heaters are installed. The concrete for the parking lot has been poured and cured and the majority of the units have been painted. So, hopefully we'll be able to take a trip out there soon when it's all complete. So, just wanted to give the board an update on that. Envision Center update. So, work is scheduled to begin on Sep, around September 1st. And then, once it's started, it's expected to take six weeks or so. We're ready to get Youth Build out of this space. They are bursting at their seams and they've got to keep adding more kids. It's getting a little tight and uncomfortable around here, so we're hoping to have everything done by November, December for our new cohort that begins in January.
How many kids you seeing in Youth Build now?
Right now, we have 17.
17, is that all kids?
You guys are doing another enrollment, right?
We have a ticket to enroll in October.
So, we got a little bit of time to get things together. Resident Services, we've had a busy couple months of Resident Services, lots of cookouts and bingos, board games. They did a movie in the park after dark at Steer Place, which was a lot of fun, cheer-a-tai-chi. So, just, it's been very busy and the residents have been enjoying it. And it's just really been nice to get back out there and connect with them, not only through the events, but also just serving them through having somebody in the building to be able to talk with them and see what they need. We've learned a lot about what our residents need and how to address those needs just by being present in the building. So, next slide. Youth Build updates. Like I said, they did win a grant from the City of Urbana for $10,000 for the beautification of Steer Place. So, they're gonna be building either garden beds or a gazebo over at Steer Place. So, they're kind of like getting the numbers together to try to see what would be better. So, that's exciting, not only for the Youth Build program, but also for our building, Steer Place, to get a little upgrade outdoors. Next slide, we did have our Youth Build graduation ceremony on July 9th. So, we had seven graduates and it was really, it was really nice. Mr. Barham, from Barham Benefits donated and decorated the whole entire room for our Youth Build students. He paid for a decorator to come in and so they were treated like kings and queens that day for sure. Next slide. Our newest cohort, our Fall 2022 cohort started on July 1st. And this group is really phenomenal. They are kicking butt. We've got what over half of them almost halfway done with their high school diploma already. All of them, all 17 of them have completed the written portion of the NCCER already. So, they're still working on getting their onsite hours, as well as their hands-on experience and some performance tasks and stuff like that. But, they're doing a really great job and we're excited about this group. It's a really positive group of young people. They're helpful. We see them around. They're pleasant. And so, we've really enjoyed having this group. And it's probably our most diverse group that we've had as well, so that's also exciting to see. Next slide. We had a summer enrichment program that was hosted by our local self-sufficiency department, which was really cool. We worked with younger kids here, June 28th through July 28th. It was held at Oakwood Trace. And so, they did things such as arts and crafts, but reading and math, just trying to keep their literacy skills up throughout the summer and games. So, it was really nice to see the little ones over at Oakwood Trace and just do some more programming at the buildings and be out there. So, that was a great program by our LSS team. So, we got some pictures on the next couple slides. And then, there's one more. Alright. And then, on July 15th, our SHIFT Program also held their first, their first social. And so, that was when we invited all of our SHIFT clients out, our workforce clients out, just to kind of celebrate the milestones that the SHIFT Program has made. It's been about two years and we've had a lot of progress and a lot of success with this SHIFT Program. And so, I think that shows even through us getting the NARROW award. So, it's been great and our SHIFT Program is doing well. So, Mark coordinated it. He's our SHIFT coordinator. And so, we just got a couple pictures of that as well. Alright, and then I stopped by Columbia Place. We have a resident, Mr. Eric Dixon, at Columbia Place, who really does an excellent job at keeping the exterior of the property nice and beautiful. He does that through planting flowers every year. And so, he plants flowers not only in his yard, flowers not only in his yard, but in the common areas and his neighbor's yard, and he keeps it really nice and beautiful. So I stopped by, and he had a whole tour scheduled for me. It was really nice. So I enjoyed it, and we ordered him a master gardener plaque. So I got some pictures from, from his, from his garden as well. Yeah, he's a really nice guy. And then coming up next week, on August thirtieth, we are hosting a landlord lunch and learn informational meeting. So our goal for this is to really, one, recruit new landlords, educate our current landlords, and just kind of build a positive image with landlords about the Housing Authority. So we'll be talking about the new source of income law where, that says landlords can't discriminate against people because they have a voucher. We've gotten a lot of questions about that, and so we're looking forward to being able to discuss that with landlords. But also, we'll be talking about the benefits of renting with the HCV program, updates to our program, and then our landlord incentives that are available. And so we'll have Michael Shavira from Hope Fair Housing come down and talk about the source of income law. And then our HACC staff will, our HACC staff will be talking about the program. And then hopefully, we spoke with Rachel over at the city. Hopefully, they'll be able to send a representative as well, someone who can just talk about what the city's plans, plans are as far as enforcing the new law. So. Then we have an all-staff meeting on September eighth. It'll be from eleven to three PM. And so if any of the board members are available for that, please feel free to come out. And then next up, we've got financials. Miguel.
Okay, so since we didn't have a board meeting last month, I'll just briefly talk about June and July, the dispersments done in both of these months. And they were actually pretty close, both of the months. June was two hundred and twenty thousand, and July was two hundred and twenty-three point five thousand. So that actually came pretty, pretty close. Out of the things to mention, in June, we made a payment for seven thousand six hundred and eighty to ARMA. This was for the permanent insurance for Newton. And that's actually the premium for the whole year. We did a payment also to Corsica Technologies for eighteen thousand dollars, out of which, part, part of it was the normal regular payment, but there was eleven thousand five hundred for firewalls for steer in Washington. So that was kind of the ordinary. Several payments for insurance as well. And in the month of July, we did a twenty thousand dollar payment to have that for humanity as part of our, as part of our move-to-work homeownership program. And that was on behalf of Courtney Fraser. That's the name of the person who benefited. My understanding, this is for her second mortgage, and this is a program that's been going on for some years now. I wanted to mention, when I said we made several payments for insurance, in, when we changed insurance companies at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, I believe, I'm not sure why exactly, or wasn't really very much involved, but the information for to determine the work comp premium, the information on our payroll was underestimated. And the premium was based on, on the information that the insurance company had. When we had our work comp audit at the end of twenty twenty-one, there was a significant difference on the premium. So that actually impacted the normal monthly expenses. And because already, the following year had been renewed based on that information, the premium was also very much understated. So I actually talked to the insurance company to be able to have some installments until we can, we can catch up. So that is actually, has moved in the effect of that. So I did want to mention that, because that's one thing that was, like I said, underestimated. But it's, it's, it's coming along. As far as the, the real versus budget part, can you go back, please, to the blended components? So as I usually have been presenting our, how our properties are doing, these are the blended components, and the blue bars are the income, and the, the orange bars are the total operating cost. Those are the blended components. If you please, can you do the discrete ones? So pretty much the same idea as usual. Haven is, is really the one that, that has very, very high revenue. And could you please put the next one? So basically, this is what I wanted to, to present, because as I said, we're, we're looking at two months. So I'd rather go directly to July of, of, be accumulated as of July, and pretty much skip up June. So what I tried to do at this point was, this very dense chart worksheet with numbers for the real versus budget, was to show graphically where, what's the comparison of the real versus budget. So the first set of bars is actually the, the income. And as you can see, the actual income is slightly under the, the budgeted income. However, on the next set of bars, you, it's okay, you can see that the total costs were actually under the budget. So that pretty much compensates that effect. And the third set of bars is the net operating income. So what I'm trying to show is that the somewhat under-budget income is, is compensated by the, by the reduction in operating costs as they were budgeted. And that effect is actually a positive effect. So that is something that I wanted to, I know the numbers are very dense, but if you see that HAC total real versus budget graph, excuse me, worksheet, the very far columns, that's where those numbers are coming from, the total income, the total operating cost, and the net operating income. So that's, that's a graphic presentation of where we are with respect to the budget. One thing to keep in mind is that these are expenses, not necessarily dispersments. Capital dispersments typically are not, are not presented in this type of graph. So I think that overall, the, the, the expenses, the dispersments have been pretty much consistent with, with, with the revenues. But we, we have to make sure that, that we keep things that way, especially when it comes to investments. We have to see what type of investments we do. I was telling Lily the other day that when we talk about, sometimes we get some grants, and I, I don't know, it's kind of half teaching, half saying, something, half being serious. But I said, well, we get these grants, and that's great, but those grants are for a specific purpose. So, but will we ever get some money to do, to put in our work capital, to, 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 to be able to, to move a little more? I mean, be a little more comfortable. And I understand that, that, that is a little more difficult to accomplish. But, but definitely, like I said, I think we are, we're, we've been doing well, but we have to be very, very sensible, very aware of what, what we're spending the money on.
Thank you, Miguel. All right. So that's the end of my report. Dr. Hillary, can you begin?
Okay. Is there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, I just have a comment I would like to make. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We have to have a motion to approve the financial report. For June and July, we'll do it collectively.
So for what?
It's been probably moved in a second that we approve the financial report for June and July. Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuarren?
Yes.
Commissioner Saibin?
Yes.
Commissioner Minnigan?
Yes.
Okay, now, is there any public comments on non-agenda items? I just have a general comment I would like to make, on behalf of, for the other board members as well. I get a lot of comments about, about the job that, that all of you out there are doing in your respective jobs. And we really appreciate what you're doing. Sometimes I get a, a call, and it's not always a good call, but I relay that information to Ms. Walton, and she gets right on and addresses the issue. Many, not many, but sometimes occasionally, a person will make a complaint or, or, or have a concern, and it doesn't even affect any of you or any, the agency at all. But it's addressed, and it's taken care of. I guess one specific concern I, I have is that I had a call about three or four weeks ago, and this one person, just has kind of been a thorn in our side for as long as I've been on the board. And this person is always complaining about something. This person that has been in, lived at Columbia Square one time, got evicted from Columbia, Columbia Square because he was not following the guidelines and the rules. And so we address those issues, and it's handled appropriately. But I just kind of wanted to say, once again, that we really appreciate everything that you're doing, all of you. And one last situation that occurred about three or four weeks ago. I got a call from First United Methodist Church, and there was a person, there was a man, and there were two or three sons that were, that were, that had a firing house, so they were homeless. And so they, church secretary called me, so I immediately called Lily and Lily's team, got right on it. They, the churches they were given, taking gas and some food at McDonald's, and I think they made a contact, and I think they went up to take a key for the night. But the, but the result, the result, final results were that it turned out to be a good, positive situation. And it got back to me, and people were very, very pleased with the way, the contact to one other staff member, to one other staff member. And it just, it was a very positive situation. And, you know, that, see, you never know. I say this because you really never know when you're talking to somebody, or you're listening to somebody, and you're out there, and you might say something that really, really affects the situation in terms of real negative into a positive. So I just wanted to commend all of you on behalf of the board, because that's what kind of situation that I see or hear. And 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 because of all of you and the board members, it, it makes a winning team for all of us. So I just want to say kudos to all of you.
Dr. Hillary, thank you. We need a close, we do need a closed session.
Is there any reason for closed sessions?
There is, Mr. Chair, very briefly for potential litigation. And it would be followed by adjournment with no action to be taken.
Can we get prepared for the closed session?
So we just need a motion to go into closed session to?
I get it. Get a motion to go into closed session. So probably move in a second to go into closed session.
For potential litigation.
For potential litigation, number two.